So, good morning and thank you very much, Megan Dyckman, the Chair of the School District 35 for Langley, for joining us this morning to sort of answer some of our questions. There's a few people on the call, we had quite a few questions submitted, which I've got and I'll go through. But a lot of these are being recorded so that we can post them to our website so people can watch them at their leisure when they get an opportunity. Everybody finds themselves kind of, if you're like me, quite busy with calls and meetings right now that are all online. So, I would also like to acknowledge that we are convening this meeting today on the traditional territories of the Coast Salish people. And so, on behalf of the Langley Chamber membership and board and staff, thank you very much for coming out today.
Thank you for this opportunity. It's always a pleasure to be able to connect with a chamber who is such an incredible and important part of our district and the support you provide, and it really is a privilege to be here. Any opportunity to connect is so appreciated during these difficult times.
More than welcome. We have always said it's completely a opportunity for us as again to show how much the chamber actually connects to every part of our community. We've been, as you know, we've been a bit of a conduit through this where it's like we take all the information and try and get out as much as possible. So, that's what we're working on right now. And hopefully, as we can provide these information sessions to people, they can get a little bit more details on what's happening. As we all know, we wait in the morning that announcements happen and then we all wait for details. And sometimes it's frustrating for parents and for business people all the way along. So, let's get started with some of the questions. Well, this week is exciting in that next week you're looking at, this week you've opened up the school board office, I believe.
Yes.
And then next week you're looking at opening up schools for more students. Now, I think there's a lot of questions around how many students, who's students? So, if you could maybe give us a bit of a more detailed answer as to what you are up to in the next few weeks.
Absolutely, would love to. You know, it's really great to be able to give you an update on the slow and steady progress that our district is making in this fast-moving time. As you know, we do, we do and report and take our direction from the ministry. And there is, as we saw Premier Horgan's announcement yesterday, it's another one coming Friday. So, a lot of the details at this point are very, they move quickly. So, you never know exactly what's going to come out from day to day because it's a changing situation, it's ever-evolving. But we are getting prepared, as you've heard, the direction, the ministry has been very clear that they would like to have students back in schools and how schools need to reopen and students need to return to school in order, you know, for a number of reasons. It's the best place for children to be and parents need to be back at work and we need to see our students back in learning opportunities. So, that is something that our district is working with the utmost attention to health and safety, which is our priority. We have moved with every decision that's been made with four pillars serving Langley. So, the priorities that guide our work are first and foremost, health and safety, supporting our essential service workers, which is, has been a priority of the province and the district all along. And making sure that we're supporting our vulnerable families and students and then making sure that there's a continuity of learning. So, district has been working daily and I have to say tirelessly to ensure that this is actually a meaningful experience for students, that when they're, when they're going on their learning journey, that they are actually having a continuity of learning and that it's meaningful and personalized. So, the other factors that the district is taking very seriously right now are the goals to meet the needs of both the students and families because they are diverse. Our each family situation is very different. Not every family is comfortable at this point having their children back in school. So, we need to work hard heading into this as we're preparing next week to make sure that our schools are safe and that message is out there, our schools are safe. We're taking the highest level of precautions to ensure the health and safety of our communities and all of those other vulnerable people in this pandemic, that their health and safety is taken into account along with our staff and students. So, those are the priorities that are going on right now between the district and the province and decisions that are being made as we look into heading into the next stages. So, where we're sitting right now is we're actually in stage, we're going to be heading into stage three. And so, with that, we need to make sure that as we roll that out, we are doing so with the utmost attention for our families. Oh, sorry, you're still muted.
Because of the background noise, I'm trying to be muted. Um, so with that, and I know that I've said from day one with the reopening process, in any situation, whether it be personal business, yes, school, family, it's going to be different for every person and family. We all need to be patient and we all need to be compassionate in that, you know, if your child has a health condition that you can't send them back to school at risk, then they need to have those opportunities. So, how are teachers and the school district going to balance the fact that they're going to have kids in front of them? And they're going to have kids on a screen? I'm going, wow. I mean, teachers already do more than I can even imagine personally, and now I'm going, okay. So, how are you handling that?
Yes, exactly. So, that is, that's such a valid point. It's really, it's a tough balance. And our Langley School District is so fortunate to have the staff that we do, they are fantastic. Our administrators, our teachers, our support workers, we have been working with a hub model and our hubs have been just fantastic. But we're getting ready as we move out of stage four. We're currently at a place right now where we're providing class support for tier one and two essential workers and support for students with diverse learning needs and then remote learning for all other students. So, all of our schools right now are open to help support the students that require in-class support at that point as we move into, out of stage four into stage three. And that's approximately 300 students and that number may continue to grow. And our schools are set up to ensure that there's physical distancing between students and staff and that the staff are trained on proper health and safety protocols. And we're proactively communicating all the information to families to make sure that that transition as we move into stage three is there and supporting our teachers and waiting to see what direction comes from the province on what that's going to look like because that's still not very clear. So, we want to have in mind how we're going to manage the different ways that learning is going to take place. Because that, so that consultation's been taking place with our partner groups and our administrators have been looking at innovative ways to use that while understanding the balance for workload and other needs for students. So, a little bit of background, the last few weeks, we were supporting 100 children of tier one essential service workers. So, that'd be our first responders, our healthcare workers, law enforcement in five learning hubs. And we've also supported families with tech devices, wifi, and then access to food programs. I mean, this is the thing when we're talking about this situation, we're not only balancing the needs of our learners in the classroom, there's also significant community needs through these challenging times. So, our staff have been doing an incredible job of balancing all of that. And so, as we continue to roll into stage three, we're going to continue to take our direction from the Ministry of Education Provincial Health Office. And we want to hear those details, but we've been working in the background with our teachers and our administrators and our support staff to try to understand how we can implement a meaningful stage three. So, we will have all schools open to support a blended model in class instructions for K to five on a part-time basis and six to 12 also was a part-time basis as well as remote. So, we are going to work to ensure that they can do the physical distancing for students and staff. And we understand a lot of families have a lot of questions and are going to want to know what this is going to look like because it is, we have to be understanding, this is, this is scary as we make the change.
And there's no playbook.
Yeah, and there just isn't. Exactly. So, we want to make sure that we understand we are doing this in a culture of fear. We, we know that people are concerned and we want to do it in a meaningful way. So, we want to do that in a slow way where we're mindful of the fact that we want to show that we have thought of the importance of making sure that our spaces are safe and that we hear how our families are hearing. So, our, our schools are going to be reaching out to families to make sure that we understand where they're coming from and concerns and making sure that we're consulting with our partner groups and all the people who are involved in our district each day. And we also want to balance that we understand that it's important to have our students in, getting in class instruction. Again, it's important that we start to open our economy back up again. It's important that we start to get a little bit of a normalcy in the schedule because as young learners, that schedule and that consistency and that grounding is essential to being in a positive place to learn and feeling safe and moving forward. And we also have to understand that human connection, especially as you're growing and going through the teenage years, is so important. And we also have to make sure we're meeting the needs of our grade 12 students. They are right at the center of every decision. Right, so we have our kindergarten on one side, starting their learning journey and that need for structure. And then our grade 12s who, it is just, it is an understatement to say that it is so emotional for our grade 12s as they were heading in for all the planning. And we're there to support them and make sure that they have a meaningful grade 12 year. So, we want to make sure that they have a meaningful graduation, but that they also have meaningful learning. The, the school year hasn't ended.
No, and they're graduating and there's finals and there's.
Yeah, and there's still work to do.
Yep.
Yeah, so we're, we want to make.
Speaking of the plan, Megan, where was, so are we looking at June for this? And then are we going to go into the normals closed for July and August and reboot and start the year in September?
Still waiting on details from the ministry, but as it understands from the information that's out there right now, it sounds like there is, there is a push for June and how exactly that'll look? It sounds like that's coming out on Friday and it sounds like it would be a normalcy. As the ministry and our school district's been very clear, we have had a continuation of learning. Like, we, learning didn't stop. We did all we can to ensure that that continued in a meaningful way. And we would can be completing, as we understand right now, June unless something different arose from the ministry and continue to, you know, just support learning and finish off the year. And as we've heard from Premier Horgan, that pushes for June.
Okay, so those kids that, so, so what does, you brought it up kindergarten, what does kindergarten look like in 2020, 2021? If you could magic ball or sort of an idea, I know you don't have specifics yet, but what do you think sort of is the trajectory?
Right, I, I believe that the ministry is looking at, you know, continuing learning. And there hasn't been any details provided on whether next year would be looking at blended or not. I think that the ministry is preparing for all scenarios. So, with a hope that we could go to a situation where we were returning to school in, in a manner that we are all familiar with, with an understanding that we might have to be flexible on what that looks like, whether that's classroom structure, whether that's protocols, whether that's blended, none of those details have been provided at all. I think that there's a view to look and see how June goes.
Yeah.
And then work through the summer to plan that. But whatever happens from our district's perspective, we'll always be careful, cautious, and take the time to roll out our transition plan in a way that's, that's healthy and safe for all and has been the top priority for us, you and staff and families in Langley for sure.
Right. So, out of this, what has been some of the innovative ideas that you've gone, wow, why, why didn't you do this before? Because I know what happens. I know even in our, in our domain, in the network and Chamberland and everything we're doing and business-wise, people have come up with these amazing ideas and you're like, yeah, okay, let's do more of this. So, what are, what are some of those key things?
Oh, yes, it really has pushed our district to force out a three-year tech plan in two months. Oh, wow, our, our staff have worked incredibly long hours to take what we saw as a three-year tech plan where we'd like to be. For instance, the, the implementation of teams in our district was something that our, our senior leadership team had looked at, maybe seeing happen in the next two years. And then we have now have that fully implemented across the district. I'm still training and our staff in every department has had a tremendous amount of pro D out of this, where it would have been difficult to plan it before. There's been a lot of new learning going on. And our students have entered this new online tech world, many of which they're used to and are actually helping some of our non-tech savvy people in the district learn. And seeing that opportunity for our students to take a learning or a teaching role in a learning environment is super excited. So, these new skills have really opened up a lot of new opportunities for our students too. We see it as having to manage your time and do a distributed model and go to the tech thing. These are all skills that are valuable in society. And I think actually there's opportunity there, yeah, I think so.
So, one of the, the concepts around this was, how could we use community experts, urban spaces, diverse businesses and natural places as an opportunity for learning in small groups? Because let's be honest, we have a virus situation and Dr. Bonnie Henry has said it, Dr. Tam has said it. Basically, we're not out of the woods and this isn't normal until we have a vaccine. That could take years.
Yeah.
Respectively, it could. And at some point, like the Spanish flu never found a vaccine, it just sort of wore itself out at some point. So, with that in mind, when we look at building schools and building our community, we are a growing community. Are you looking at it from a different lens?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we know that the return for school is going to look different and it's going to require a significant amount of creativity and collaboration. And we're, we're doing that for both opportunity and also with the understanding that we want to ensure the highest level of health and safety. So, because of that, we're probably going to be looking at partner organizations and the business community to help move some of those innovative ideas forward. And we, we have been so fortunate already from everything from the idea summit to workplace opportunities for training that we have partnered with various chamber members, businesses throughout the Langleys. We're going to be looking and at opportunities like that, continuing to expand them. So, we know that virtual and remote learning are a big part of that. And we know that we are very fortunate to have these strong ties with the township Langley and many small businesses here. So, those opportunities for collaboration, we are going to continue to want to expand. So, we have some really great examples of that. I mean, and one example is with our IDST programming, we, we make a lot of trips to the Maker Cube, for instance, for our, our schools. And that's, those types of opportunities aren't opportunities we can replicate in our schools. So, if we can look at sort of those types of expansions of opportunities to get smaller groups out. We have our outdoor education program, which we've previously made use of natural spaces and parks. So, we'll be looking for, you know, an expansion of those types of opportunities where we can think creativity outside of schools. And at the secondary level, there are a lot of project opportunities for our students to be mentored by those in the business community too. And those are some other ideas that have been looked at by our leadership going forward. And in elementary schools, we've previously invited local dance and yoga instructors to help meet daily physical activity requirements. So, there might be a lot more examination of ways that we can make use of those types of opportunities. So, all of these can still be accomplished, but we're going to have to continue to look at how we can do that in the health, in the highest level of health and safety. So, we're going to be taking these, these ideas and looking at how we can make that work going forward, that type of creativity and innovation.
Okay, I do have a gentleman on the line, on, on the call with us today that had submitted the question. And he would like, I'm thinking that maybe a follow-up might work on that. But I'd like to get through some of the other questions that we have from other people at this time first. And then maybe David, we could actually take that offline with Megan after. I'm happy to do that as well.
Sure.
So, how do you feel, not feel, excuse me, that's the wrong word to use. So, when you were talking about the graduating students as well, how and what are some of the ideas that have come up? I know parents are being, like, trying to come up with ideas. I was my daughter's grad person, I was the chair of the PAC version of the, the grad thing. And I know all the work that goes in and the things that we try and do for our students. And so, so where are we at with that? I know each school's going to be different, but, but what are they, I mean, I'm sure they're coming up with some amazing ideas.
Yeah, there seems to be a real, you know, first of all, acknowledgement that this is not a normal grad year. And, and I just want to say to our grade 12s, you know, every day it's at the forefront of my mind that this is, this is so challenging and I know how hard you've worked and the excitement you have and the pride you have and the connections you've made over the years. And I want you to know that at our district, we care deeply about each one of you and, and want you to have the most meaningful grad year possible. And, you know, in Langley, you'll often hear the term "nothing without effort", something that's guided our community for a long time and most in tears.
I know.
And for you, we, we will put in the most, most effort we can. All right, so, we, we are planning on virtual grads. So, our virtual graduations are something that each school's putting together to make sure that, that they have a special meaningful more grad ceremony. So, how that'll work, each school community is working very hard to ensure that the kids have a fantastic graduation. And it'll be maybe in groups, coming across stages, it'll be live streamed and all the components of the grad will be there. It'll just be a little different. And so, that's what each of our administrators are working so hard on. And our secondary teachers and our support staff have made grade 12s the top priority right now. Getting them a meaningful end of school year and a meaningful graduation so that they can successfully graduate and go on to the next excellent adventure.
And the next steps are interesting, I know from having a university student in my house right now. The next steps are of all a little bit different from normal as well. So, it's, it's, we're a few stages from normal, I think, on all of this. But, um, you know, I appreciate the stuff and the efforts. I know I was talking to a teacher the other day and she just said to me, she said, "It breaks my heart." She goes, "But then we go on a drive around and go see our students." She goes, "And it makes me want to get back in there and do more."
So, and those, those drive arounds, those community parades in the cars and all of those, those are, that's truly the heart we have in our district. You know, that's not something that's mandated, that's not something that happens because you're told. That happens because the people that work in our schools every day, they care and they make it special. And that's, that's what, I'm so glad we haven't lost.
Yeah, no, and I think actually probably maybe enhanced.
Yeah.
Amazing, who comes together and what happens in a time like this, you know? The things we learn, the people we, we've come to find that we can count on and, and work together with. It's, it's amazing, this energy that happens. Let's.
Yeah, for sure.
So, where are we at here? So, I'm just checking my questions, sorry. What's probably for you as the school board trustee, I'm going to do this into two parts. As a school board trustee chair, what's been the biggest obstacle you've had to overcome in the past eight weeks?
We have had some really interesting things that we had to overcome. You know, one is, is the continuation of governance in the district and maintaining connection. And, and our board is wonderful and have worked so hard to ensure that, you know, the important matters stay at the front of the, of our minds, making sure that we're continuing to support our staff, making sure that we're making fiscally responsible decisions. Because this is a time of a lot of fiscal uncertainty.
Oh, yes.
And it is, it is a really, for us as, as sort of governors of our district in a co-governance model with the ministry, something that's at the front of our mind all the, all the time. What is it going to look like to budget going forward? What is it going to look like to plan? We've been able to continue to implement our strategic plan and some wonderful work's been done. But for sure, making sure our strategic plan keeps going forward. So, you're in this strange dynamic where you're responding to a crisis all the time. And crisis management is very different than just steady governance, as you, you know, with your experience. So, we're, on one side, our, our leadership team is saying, okay, we're going to, we're going to navigate this crisis. We're going to continue to move forward. And on the other side, we're going, okay, but we do need to make sure that all the important needs of the district are still being met with some level of normalcy. So, that has been for sure, one of the biggest challenges is balancing the immediate with the long-term governance. And we, you know, this board and our leadership team have pulled together to do a wonderful job. We, we are in good hands in this town. We have a safe schools, we have a healthy school, we have a strong leadership team who are committed to the best interests of students and making sure that we do so in a fiscally responsible manner. And that is, that truly is, is something that I have to say, we are very blessed to have here.
So, that, and that's fantastic because we're going to need it moving forward.
Yes, definitely, absolutely.
When we look, when we talk about fiscal responsibility, so from a business perspective, things are on fire. The economy and we're, we're much better off in B.C. than we are in other parts of Canada and of course in parts of the world. So, I, I'm a lucky star. But as we start to reopen businesses and open other, other opportunities at parks and things like that, it does lighten everybody's load a little bit, but it also does increase that idea of fear. And so, there are going to be a lot of people that just choose to stick with the remote learning. But there's also people that are concerned about next year's school year and, and moving forward. I think having all of those plans in place will really, I mean, the sooner the better, the more knowledge is power for people. So, do we have a timeline from the province on when you'll know more about what's happening for September? Are they waiting to August? Are you?
Yeah.
Now, because they've changed up the formula for your money. They've decreased property taxes on commercial and industrial to the school tax and other things. I'm assuming that the province is going to look at topping that up so school districts aren't cut that much, but where are we at?
Right, there hasn't been any firm information provided yet. I'm hoping that they will give a little bit of a glimmer on Friday with the announcement. Otherwise, we would be looking at maybe the response in June to what it would look like in September, which I think there might be a little bit of both, like this is the plan, now let's reevaluate. Yeah, budgeting is always a concern. I mean, we have, we are in a good place right now. We, we are going to be presenting the budget at our main meeting. And there's been an incredible amount of work from our Secretary Treasurer's office on that. We are, we're cautiously optimistic, we're aware of the fact that this will probably be one of the toughest budgets going forward. But the fiscal prudence of the board's past and their commitment to keeping access to emergency funds and proper planning and restricting surpluses to where they need to be for proper fiscal planning have put us in a better place than many others because we were able to do that through, through careful planning. And the thanks to our, our Secretary Treasurer's Department, who are always so careful to make sure that we understand the risks that are there. So, the board has had a very long conversation at our last finance facilities committee about what we needed to be aware of risk-wise. I mean, there's always the risk like international students, there's the risk with budget changes, there's the risk with enrollment. But we understand those risks and will continue to consult going forward with our community and continue to ask the questions we need to with the province and work hard as a district and a board to ensure that our, our district's okay going forward. And I feel confident that we are going to have a, a year where we have to be mindful of not, not exposing ourselves to further risk, but planning for making sure we deliver the best education we can next year.
And the growth of time, these experiences, I mean, we've just built a brand-new school, we're looking at that. And I mean, and when we, when those schools were built, there wasn't social distancing in place. So, now you're looking at, and so will, do we look forward when we're, we're looking at planning for five and 10 years now? Do we look at larger spaces? Do we look at, will this impact how we look forward forever?
And that's a question that definitely we need to ask. I am, I sit on the BCST's capital planning committee. And that's a great question that definitely want to make sure that we get back is how will this change facilities planning for the future? Make sure that we, we are looking at that because we already have a space issue in Langley. We're a growing community.
Yeah.
We're a community that is, is in a situation where we're fortunate because we're growing. But by the same token, it does, it does cause stress to our, our capital spaces. So, we want to make sure that as we're going forward, we're also thinking of this to ensure that people are safe.
Great.
Yeah.
Um, if anybody has any questions that they'd like to pose now, it'd be a good time to pop them into the chat box and I can moderate from there because I have one left on my list. And I was going to sort of ask you, Megan, you know, are we going to see a need for more teachers with this? In that we, you know, class sizes need to be smaller in order to, I mean, we've always, class size has always been an issue as, as politics-wise, as we know. And I think, you know, maybe moving forward, when you look at having to keep the social distancing in the smaller spaces, is that going to be something we're needing to look at?
All right, staffing, something that definitely our leadership team's working hard with the ministry to get answers to questions around that. That's a really good question. It's one of those areas of uncertainty of how the classes would be planned and whether they would have to be changed. And it's definitely something that, that we're working closely with the ministry to understand what that's going to look like going forward. That's a really, really, really good question.
And it'll be interesting how the ministry moves forward because as a lot of these things apply, what applies in an urban area may not work in a rural or vice versa. So, you've got, you know, there, there's not, it's not a cookie cutter, each school district is different with
Yes.
size and, and facilities and budget, as you mentioned. So, I think, you know, moving forward, it's going to be one of those case-by-case bases again, probably a little bit more so than in the past.
I agree, I agree very much so. While you're looking at that, I just wanted to just say that if, if it's all right, we have been so fortunate and I want to take the opportunity to thank our community, hopefully I'm okay through this. Our business community has provided thousands of dollars to the Langley School District Foundation's Food for Thought Program, providing $50 gift cards to over 600 families every week. And many local business organizations have also. And many local business organizations have also gone and donated gifts and kind directly to the schools. Meals, non-perishable food items to schools like Nico Meckel and North Otter and Parkside. And we've heard from families and know that this crisis has been impacting them economically. So I'm just on behalf of Langley Board of Education and School District, I just want to say that we are extremely grateful to everything, every business. And every individual has helped us through this to help us overcome this crisis. Because without your support, we wouldn't be that way and Langley comes together when things are tough. And this is, this is one example of many, but is a significant example, so thank you for supporting our families.
Happy to do it, I'm very glad to hear that the foundation is going forward with the bursaries and scholarships.
Yes.
The chamber has four scholarships that we give away every year and we're very, very pleased to see that that's continuing this year. And and, you know, those students are gonna need that extra help getting to their programs and universities and buying books and doing all the things that they need to do to. Continue their education on, we do have a question in the chat box, looking at it to September. Has there been any discussions or thoughts about policies around community members coming into the schools?
Yeah, so policy reviews are definitely something that we are gonna be looking at. As we get some information from Provincial Health Authority and the Ministry of Expectations. So typically with those types of policies, we receive provincial directions so that they're the same from community to community. So there'll be a very, I'm sure it'll be an ongoing conversation about what sort of policies need to be in place to ensure that our schools are are safe. And healthy. And typically with that type of policy, we do work closely with the provincial health authority to understand it. So that's a really good question, that'll be something that will be part of our.
Context, it's big brothers, big sisters, it's Rosalyn asking, so that's the context.
Yeah, oh yeah, for sure. So with that type of policy of Rosalyn, we would be working with our organizations, we'd be impacted of that. So we would be talking to our organizations as we started to examine what a policy, if any, is needed going forward would look like. So we would work with our groups.
Great, okay, I don't have any further questions. If anybody does have any further questions for the chat box, we can close this off and then I can get David and Megan can, you can take that question off afterwards.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you very much and we will ask you back again after we figure out what we're doing with June and September, we'll definitely get you to give us an update.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it, I mean, keeping our community members informed. What you guys are doing, the great work you're doing at the school district actually helps the business community have somewhere for their kids to go. Thank you, Rosalyn, for popping in, thanks everybody else and again, thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you and thank you again for the opportunity, thank you again for your support and the scholarships and everything else you do. And we're grateful for the relationship we have with the chamber.
As we are, thank you very much.
Thank you, take care.